Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation which will be delivered by Anthony D. Allen. He's the staff chaplain at the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. And I'll add in visiting with him this morning, he has had two active roles in conflicts around the world. We appreciate his service and he's here to lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Good morning. Will you join me in prayer? Let us pray. Oh God, in whose presence our souls take delight. We come here together again, oh Lord, where decisions are considered and decided concerning the citizens of this community. Help us to lead the tensions and frustrations of the world outside the outer door. Forgive us of our failures, pardon our neglects, cleanse our hearts and revive our weary spirits. Give those an authority, wisdom in every decision and help them to think clearly. Grant them discernment and common sense so there be strong and effective leaders. Help them to lead and govern with integrity and may their integrity guide them and keep them on track. Bring together our scattered thoughts and help us to recall our victories for our encouragement. Show us ways to reach each other in the spirit of love to strengthen the precious bonds of our fellowship. Grant us peace within and between ourselves. Help us to nourish each other and promote the love and harmony so essential to us all. We dedicate this time together to you and thank you for your countless blessings. It is in your name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the meeting to order and we'll move on to item three. We'll start with a report from the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. And Roy Williams is here to give us his quarterly update. Good morning, Roy.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Mr. Mayor, member of council, Mr. City Manager, it's always a pleasure to be here, so thank you. I will give you a brief update on some of the economic development activity going on in the community. But many of the topics that I'm going to talk about are very similar to my last report about 90 days ago. But the good news is that there's really significant progress on each and every one of them. First thing I want to mention was criminal justice. The newly formed Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is really picking up now and moving forward where the task force that was initially created left off. And through collective efforts, we have now reduced our jail population down to around 1,600. When I talked to you 90 days ago, we were at about 1,850. But about a year ago, we were at 2,600. So we have reduced the jail population about 1,000, which is about 40 percent in about a year's worth of work. That is a big reduction. And the city gets a lot of that credit because of what the city is doing and also a number of other people. But a very dedicated judge, Cindy Trong, has really done a lot of work as well. We've also hired an executive director, the first executive director of the council, Timothy Tartabono. This will allow the council now to really speed up the work of all of the committees and the implementation of the task force recommendations that came from the Vera study. We also have seen success at the legislature on a bill the task force recommended and is supporting which allows special judges to release inmates on their own recognizance. Also, due to another bill passed last session that we supported, I've been named the chair of an interim study committee on a task force of fines and fees. And I look forward to when the House of Representatives names its nominees to the task force to begin that war. Next thing I want to mention is the Innovation District. Not unlike our work in criminal justice reform, a very important next step in bringing in an executive director to lead the effort and see the recommendations become reality is underway. The Oklahoma Health Center Foundation has officially formed a new legal entity to lead this effort. And a national search firm has been engaged and is helping us identify an executive director. That process is currently underway and we are conducting candidate interviews as I speak. Both the Criminal Justice Initiative and the Innovation District, I think, are examples of the tremendous power that occurs when you bring public and private sector partnerships together. So we're making great progress. Some specific economic development activity. We've been talking to you in the past for a while about the strength of our pipeline, meaning the deals that we're actively working. And that's bearing out in our announcement activity. Last time I talked to you here about the announcements of NTT Data Services, MedXM, Amazon, Solaris, and SkyWest. And in total, last year in 2017, the projects that we were involved in, we announced over 4,175 new primary jobs in the greater Oklahoma City region with an average salary exceeding $49,000 and capital investments of roughly a quarter of a billion dollars. And things don't appear to be slowing down for 2018. Already in 2018, we've seen some major announcements that boost key industries in Oklahoma City. Kratos Defense and Security Solutions Incorporated, which is a leading national security solutions provider, announced last month that they will open administrative and engineering offices and production facilities in Oklahoma City for its Unmanned Systems Division. With that announcement, Oklahoma City will once again be home to an aerospace production facility, which is a huge win for our aerospace industry. Kratos specializes in military target drones with fighter-like performance. The company expects to employ roughly 350 people in Oklahoma within the next few years. And Oklahoma City will be the site for new tactical drone production. Of particular interest in local startup companies that continue to grow and add new jobs, WeGoLook recently announced an expansion of 367 new jobs. So this is a trend we see continuing in the next couple of months. Just a shot of what our pipeline looks like. We have 27 manufacturing projects we're working on, 10 distribution projects, six office, six shared service centers, and five call centers. So a pretty healthy pipeline. And in looking at the projects by age, more than half of the projects we're working on are less than eight months old, which is a really good indication. With regard to aerospace and Tinker, we're very excited about the work on the KC-46A Heavy Maintenance Complex that's under construction on the south side of Tinker. They're making a great deal of progress on the old BNSF rail yard site. We're also planning now for our annual DC fly-in to Washington, DC. A big reason for this trip is the engagement we have with officials at the Pentagon. Last year, we had eight four-star generals in attendance at our function, which, as an aside, Senator Inhofe remarked to me that we probably violated some military protocol by having all those stars in one room at the same time. So we will try to replicate that again. And we welcome the city's participation in this particular important event. We're also working on non-stop flights. Just as the good job amount announcements keep rolling in, so do the new non-stop flights from our airport. We're continuing our work to market Frontier's new flights to Orlando and San Diego. We're also beginning work to promote the new flights to Philadelphia on American Airlines. And we look forward to working on promoting the Via Air service direct to Austin. We do this work for the Airport Trust on a cost-only basis because of the importance that it has to our business community and to the growth of our visitor industry. With regard to retail development, recent announcements have come from Costco, which is here today and on your agenda, and Container Store. And our work to continue to bring destination retailers to the market continues to show success. We're also preparing to attend RECON, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers show in Las Vegas, which we go to every year. And we hope to bring back additional success from that market. The last thing I want to mention, on a final note, is to give an appreciation for the true partner, Mayor Mick Cornet, has been to the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber in helping us grow the economy and improving the quality of life in our community. Whether we were meeting with economic development prospects or working on retail development projects or working to make an even greater place to live, his leadership and engagement has just been very crucial to that success. And personally, I want to express my thanks to the mayor, who's been a frequent travel companion of mine, literally planes, trains, and automobiles all across North America. And I've really enjoyed that relationship and opportunity. So we're going to miss that special relationship, but hopefully the future might allow that to continue. So thank you for what you have done for us, Mr. Mayor. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Roy?
Just on the retail front, has the chamber ever studied what percent of Oklahoma City's sales tax comes from the rural community or...
Outside the marketplace?
Outside of Oklahoma City, rural people traveling into Oklahoma City to shop?
We have not conducted a study, but I have had conversations with economists which indicate that it's probably somewhere 30 to 40 percent comes from outside of the marketplace, which includes not only rural Oklahoma, but visitors from all over in the hospitality industry as well. So I've not seen a breakdown of just rural Oklahoma, but outside purchasing.
You think there's a relationship there between why our sales tax correlates with oil and gas, even though we only have 3 percent of our population here in Oklahoma City employed in oil and gas, but maybe more in the rural communities?
There's probably some, but not being an economist and not having studied it, can't tell you for certain, but there's probably.
But you think about 30 to 40 percent of Oklahoma City's sales tax comes from...
People who do not live in Oklahoma City.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Roy, thanks again. Appreciate all the good news.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 3B is an appointment to the Bond Advisory Committee. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is a Journal of Council Proceedings. Foray is to receive the journal for February 13th. And for B is to approve the journal for January 30th and February 6th. All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, starting on page 21, under item 9F1, A 2141 North Bath, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item H 3125 North Virginia, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item K 4010 Northwest 9th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, we need to re-notify. Item L 1017 Northwest 10th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item T 113 Southeast 38th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item U 1218 Northeast 39th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item V 341 Southeast 45th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item X 404 Northwest 96th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item Y 919 Northwest 100th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item E 3125 North Virginia, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item G 1017 Northwest 10th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 22. Item P 113 Southeast 38th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner secured. Item R 1218 Northeast 39th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item S 341 Southeast 45th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Item U 404 Northwest 96th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And item V 919 Northwest 100th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. Then on claims to be paid, item 10A1B, we ask that that needs to be stricken and we're going to reset that for a later date.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll move on to revocable permits. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak this morning, Isaiah and DeAndre Gaines. Are you here? Yeah, come on up. A request, April 20th, in Ward 4 at Wiley Post Park. Sounds like voter registration and other opportunities. Yes, go ahead and tell us about the event.
Yes.
Well, I need your name and address for the record, too.
Okay. My name is Isaiah Gaines. I live at 11611 Elmhurst Drive in Midwest City, Oklahoma, 73130. He also lives at the same address as my brother, DeAndre Gaines. The event that we are holding is called the... Man, I get the proper name. The 420 Voter Registration Education and Campaign Rally for Connie Johnson. It's to support the State Question 788. That will be held on June 6th, I believe, to support the passing of medical marijuana. And it's also to help Connie Johnson, who is also running for governor in the November elections, to support her view and everything. Basically, it's to educate the population about what medical marijuana can do, what's its benefits, to basically destroy any stigmas that people would have on medical marijuana or marijuana in general, like how there was, I guess you would call it, a reefer madness and everything that there was back in the...
What are the hours of the event going to be?
The hours of the events will be between 9:00 AM and 9:30 PM.
It's an all-day event?
Yeah, basically all day. We have the park for, I think it was 6:30 to 9:30, but I mean, 6:30 is a little bit too early.
I understand. All right, it's in Ward 4. I'll look for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 6B is a request to hold the Red Bud Classic. And is this Patty Anthony? Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming down. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive, Oklahoma City, 73116.
And you've been doing this quite some time. How many years have we been having the Red Bud Classic?
This is the 36th Annual Red Bud Classic, to be held April 7th and 8th. This year, we're having the bicycle tours on Saturday, April 7th, 10, 33, and 45-mile bicycle tours in the morning and a kids' event in Nichols Hills Plaza in the afternoon. On Sunday, we have the runs, the timed 5 and 10K runs and the two-mile walk and baby stroller derby in the afternoon, starting at 2:00. This year, the proceeds from the event are going to WizKids Oklahoma, which is a one-on-one mentoring program held for the inner-city public schoolchildren. So we're very excited about the event this year. We've secured all permits. We have our security lined up and have passed all the regulations.
All right, it's in Ward 2 and Ward 7.
Yes.
Push that. And John? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you so much.
How can people sign up?
Yeah, you can go to redbud.org. Online registration is open. We anticipate about 5,000 runners and cyclists and hopefully put on a nice event for the citizens of Oklahoma City, a fitness, community, family-friendly event.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. All right, we'll assess the council meeting convene. As the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, looks like there are five items on the MFA. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Let's adjourn the OC-MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items. All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Four items.
Your Honor, before, I'd just like to talk about these real quickly before we vote on those.
Sure.
So what this really deals with is a rural recycling facility, two of those. One of those is located at Northeast 63rd, west of Vado Street. The other one is at 74th and South Douglas. So I'm pretty excited about that. I know I knocked a lot of rural doors out there and a lot of people are really interested in recycling. I just didn't have any place really convenient to go to. So I think it's going to be a fantastic, highly-used facility out there.
Great. Hope so.
And Mr. Mayor, I have to agree with Councilman Stone. In the far eastern part of Ward 7, they are really excited about this great opportunity to finally get a chance to have a recycling program out that way.
All right, let's vote on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
I'm sure Pete White is smiling someplace about this.
All right, we'll adjourn the OC-EAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
[inaudible]
All right, I know we have some presentations. Are there any individual considerations? Larry?
A-H.
A-H? Ed?
A-H.
Mayor, I'd like to mention 7C.
C?
C.
Okay.
APAS.
AP in...
AS.
AS.
And Mr. Mayor, 7A81.
Jim, you want to have our presentations first?
Great. We do have two presentations. One is a significant item. We are putting the Convention Center out to bid today upon council approval. And so Adam Polish is here with Populous to give a presentation on the Convention Center. Adam was here, I don't know, a month or six weeks ago to update us.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning. Mayor, City Manager, Council. Very exciting day. As the City Manager said, we saw you about six weeks ago, I think it was end of January. And despite all the weather last week, we were able to execute successful subcommittee meetings and Citizens Advisory Board. And we received unanimous approval on both fronts to move this forward. So we're very excited with you here today to walk through what we're calling our final presentation. A lot of it, I know all of you have seen before, but that's not going to make this presentation any shorter. We think it's very important to walk through the final plan so that everyone is comfortable with what we're putting in front of you today. So a little bit of the history of the project as we go back. We still talk about the design principles as if they were just made yesterday. This is something that's been important to us as we move forward. And, you know, over the past six months, I'd say with the park under construction and the streetcar now going in all over town, all of these have become extremely real. So there was a lot of insight that we put into these over two years ago when we came up with these. And to see them coming to light today, it's certainly something that's very, very powerful for the city of Oklahoma City. So, and that's not us, that is everyone in this room today. So that's very, very exciting. Project coordination, along with, you know, our internal team that we coordinate with on a daily basis, we've probably coordinated hundreds of coordination meetings with local authorities, from fire to planning to the police department on how we can get this building to be as safe and operate as securely as we possibly can. Even as far as the code officials, they're probably annoyed with us, which is many times as we've reached out to them to make sure we're checking all the boxes for this building to be safe and to operate accordingly. There's a few teams up there that I want to add. The Omni Convention Center Hotel, we've been coordinating with them recently. Their architecture team has been a good partner for us. Because the buildings will interact quite frequently, they've been open and we've been open with them on sharing how these designs will go together and function as a convention center district. So, and also I want to add that SMG is the future building operator. So we've been working with them closely over the course of design on how this building is actually going to function. And we've received buy-off with them at each stage, even as much as we're doing it now, on how we will furnish the building, the types of furnitures, as far down as the utensils and so on. So again, the operator is on board with how we're going to use this building as well. So, believe it or not, it's more than just Populous that works on this team. Our local partner, GSB, is here with us today as well. And I would say this is just a short list of the amount of consultants we have on this job. And 60 percent of this list are local Oklahoma City firms. So we might be out of Kansas City, but we're here quite often. And a lot of this work does come out of Oklahoma City. So it does have that local stamp when you see these drawings on where this work is actually coming from. So when we came up with this story on how we were going to design this building, we used Court to Shore and Earth to Sky. Court to Shore was an easy one to latch on to, something that was already in place when we started designing this project. And when we came up with Earth to Sky, we really wanted to emphasize the relationship of the Oklahoma City landscape and how it touches into the beautiful horizon and the sky across the city. And so we went through many design studies on how do you capture Oklahoma City in a nutshell and how do you capture it in a building. Convention centers, sometimes they might be the only space that guests see in your city. So how do you capture the momentum and the energy that your city has? These images were taken over two years ago, and you could probably replace these images now with a completely new set of images just because of all the development that's happened around this district. Because of the way that our building is facing the western facade, we took form, opacity, and light into extreme consideration, not only to protect the building, but protect the people and the materials inside of the building. Again, some precedent images that we used of local Oklahoma landscapes and history to determine the palette and the look and feel of not only the exterior, but the inside of the building as well. As I said, protecting the building was important to us. And the way that the building laid out really started to drive the form of the building. And we say form follows function. It's basically architecture at its most elemental state. And this is something that we did not come up with in a bubble. We worked very closely with our respective subcommittee and Citizens Advisory Board to come up with a program and a layout of this building that met all the users' needs and all of the stakeholders that will take part. Over the course of design, I'm very proud to say that we were very diligent on how we managed the program of the facility. The program that we started with over two years ago is the exact same program that's in the building today. We never had to sacrifice any kind of functionality or any sellability of this building over the course of design. Everything that you see today is exactly how it was designed over two years ago. And it's a testament to our design team and our subcommittee and all the parties that we've coordinated with to see it in this state today. Just to refresh everyone's memory, it's the 200,000 square feet of exhibit hall, 30,000 square foot ballroom, and the 45,000 square feet of meeting room space. And the building is designed for a potential connection to a future expansion at some point in the future. I'll walk through these renderings and I'll point out some of the key materials that we're using over the course of design. This aerial is starting to become realer and realer by the minute. We flew in last night and you can start to see the outlines of all of these features in the park. And shortly, you will start to see construction of all the other parcels of land surrounding it. So again, certainly exciting. The exterior materials are made up of a palette that we're very comfortable with. We use materials like this on buildings of this scale often. It's a combination of textured plaster, insulated metal panel for our ballroom roof. We have some prefabricated concrete panels that we're using and a combination of perforated metal panel that we're using to screen all of the mechanical equipment and all of the exterior stairs around the facility. I want to add that these are high-traffic buildings, so we were very specific on how we lay out the materials and the maintenance and the upkeep. We understand that the climate is unique in this area as far as the red dirt and how you clean. So we're very comfortable with the maintenance and the usability of all these materials on a building that will receive this much traffic and wear. The views, looking south on Robinson, the roof that you see in this image is a combination of that metal panel that we're using to highlight the painted sky ballroom. That's that 4,000 exterior balcony that's directly adjacent to the ballroom that you see next to that main entry atrium. Looking west over the park, the view from the park, you can see the building rising above the tree line. Again, when you think of earth, sky, and horizon, this is one image that really captures it all as you see the building, touch the ground, and rise into the horizon and into the sky. So again, it's certainly a powerful thought to see something of this scale arising from the center of the park. Looking south on Robinson Street again, I want to point out that the underside of all of these forms that you see around the glass, that that is a wood, a natural wood material that is an engineered product. Again, it's something that we think checks all the boxes. It's beautiful, it's warm, it is a palette that is acceptable and the area relates to the park. And it's also something that is easily maintainable and will last for a substantial amount of time as the building is alive. So you see that same soffit material looking north along Robinson Street. And this is a view on Shields, looking north. I want to point out in this view that this is the backside of the building. This is our loading and service areas. We've taken consideration on how we're going to screen... how we're going to screen each of these areas. The loading dock will be a busy place, not necessarily saying it'll be a dirty place, but it will be a busy place. So it was important for us to keep most of that activity behind closed doors. This is also a security reason to allow trucks with the right credentials to get inside the facility. Also on the roof, all of the mechanical equipment will be screened by this same screening material, again, to shield it from the view of not only pedestrians, but cars coming north into downtown. An aerial showing the relationship between Robinson and the park. It was decided in our coordination with the park team, planning, that there will be a single crosswalk at the center of our building that will connect to the park. This will provide the back-and-forth between all of the amenities that are located in that central area of the park and the main entry plaza of our facility. And then the view coming north on Robinson into the new gateway into Oklahoma City. Again, this is that exterior balcony view looking over the park. I stress this in every one of our meetings on how unique this is. Most convention centers that we work on, they're bound by the city grid, and very rarely do you see a facility of this scale have the opportunity to overlook something that's powerful. So this is truly something that's not only unique to the conventions industry, this is unique for Oklahoma City as well. So, very, very cool. Exterior elevations to see the overall form of the building. And as we move into the interior, the building is broken up on three levels, and this is where we really put the earth, horizon, and sky concepts into action. The lower level is the exhibit hall level, and we have a darker palette that emphasizes the earth concept, so you'll see that in some of these renderings. The middle level is the canopy, so we talk about the horizon. You'll start to see some wood grains, some lighter materials. And the ballroom level is the sky. We introduce some backpainted glass, reflective material and lighting on all of those program areas as well. For example, this is that interior, this is an entrance to the exhibit hall where you can see the black marble, sorry, the black granite format tile that's in the entry to the exhibit hall. Something that we thought was powerful to put something this ominous there, because as you walk through this threshold, imagine the exhibit hall is light and bright and full of activity. So when you start to think about those kind of experiences in the space, it starts to become very powerful. Along with traditional meeting rooms, all over the building, we have these informal areas. This was something that was not only important to us, but it was important to Mike Carrier and his team, how they're going to sell the building. Stuff like this is important to SMG as well. Typically in these buildings, when you see a conference, it is littered with people looking for places to sit and eat, and mainly they sit on the floor in the way that most of these buildings exist today. So we've provided ample opportunity for them to congregate outside of their meetings. All of these areas have data and power. The entire building is Wi-Fi equipped, again, so providing the technology that one would need to have a successful meeting outside of the meeting and to congregate and to coordinate as they see fit. The main atriums, to circulate up the building, we've purposely left the palette a little bit cleaner to allow for the amount of natural light that's going to come into the space. When you're coming up, these escalators and elevators, you'll have direct views out into the park, and you'll be able to see each level of the facility, allowing for easy wayfinding within the building. This is what we're calling the canopy level. Parts of our meeting rooms are to the right. You can start to see some of the wood grain that we have to emphasize the entries to those spaces. The informal seating pods that we have to the left, again, to reemphasize how those are located throughout the facility. The one on the previous slide was to the north of our building. This is the informal seating area to the south as well. We've said it from the very beginning that the days of meeting in meeting rooms that don't have access to natural light and the elements are slowly coming to an end, and this will be one of the first actual convention centers in the country to have the amount of inventory of meeting rooms that have access to natural light like this. It's still important to modulate the natural light, so each one of these rooms will have floor-to-ceiling glass with the capability to be blacked out to allow for presentations and light modulation in the space. The meeting room from the glass looking in. So in designing this, not only was the ballroom a stringent requirement on doing this, but it's our goal to make this the most flexible building possible. So we introduced what we're calling the junior ballroom. This is approximately a 12,000 square foot space that can work with the ballroom, but it can also be divided into three 2,500 square foot meeting rooms as well. So in doing this, this is our, this is us giving the sales team the ability to never say no. Anybody should be able to come into this building and plan a meeting and put an event on because of the amount of flexibility that we've built into the facility. The ballroom level, the top of the escalators. And this is that ballroom pre-function with the entry to the ballroom to the right. There's floor-to-ceiling glass, approximately anywhere between 25 to 28 feet tall, that directly relates to the exterior balcony to the left. This glass is interesting because it's not just a series of doors. It's actually a series of movable walls to allow for the transition of ballroom, pre-function, to exterior balcony. So essentially, it gives your ballroom the opportunity to grow from a 30,000 square foot space to a 45,000 square foot space, again, accommodating events of much larger scale than what you would typically have. And a view from inside the ballroom. Over the course of design, I know that everyone here is familiar with the connections to the hotel, a potential bridge to the hotel that we've been coordinating with Omni. It's not in our project currently, but it is an alternate. This is a rendering from that bridge heading back to the convention center. You can see the escalators and the stairs in the distance. This is from the convention center looking out to where that bridge would connect, again, providing a seamless transition from our facility to the hotel if this bridge would be taken as an alternate. This area here is not an alternate. This is the pedestrian bridge that will be, now be connecting to the new parking garage at the parcel of Fourth and Broadway. This was a recent development in the design of this, and it was something that was added into our project over the, about maybe November of last year. So this is not an alternate. It's in our base bin. It's approximately 400-foot-long passageway that gets people from that parking garage to the front door of the meeting room space in the facility. And this is the graphic that's on that wall. It's OKC repeated. I think it's really cool because the O and the C allow the pattern to repeat. It's very subtle, but certainly something that's thoughtful. So I want to go over key building and wayfinding really quickly so that everybody understands what signs will be visible from the public. On the south end of the building, we have a building identity sign that we're calling our shadow sign. It's a series of punched letters in a cantilevered sign that during specific times of the day, over the course of the year, the words Oklahoma City Convention Center will be broadcast on the side of the building in shadow. I think this is very subtle and a delicate way to handle building signage on a facility of this type. On the back end of the building, we have our main identity sign, as you saw in that rendering. They're channel-lit letters that say Oklahoma City Convention Center, providing a little bit of interest on that facade. Along the plaza space, along Robinson, we have a series of these exterior pylons. These exterior pylons are serving many masters. They're not only providing static wayfinding to get people in and out and around the building, they also carry LED and digital signage that will be customizable to the event, to the convention center, or even on off days, the ability to sell advertisement or civic announcements, for example. All of the exterior lighting that you see in these renderings is going to be a combination of lights that are mounted to the building, but also the color-changing lights that we've shown, with the ability to brand the facility into blue, green, yellow. When the Oklahoma City Thunder won a championship, they all come from these pylons. So they are certainly serving many masters on how this building will look from the exterior. Inside the building, this is a typical amenity sign, along with the exhibit hall identities. When I say typical amenity, it's a sign that will talk about everything from restrooms to, restrooms to ATMs, any kind of program space, elevators. They will get a sign that resembles this. And the interior directories are a combination of concrete, wood, and backpainted glass corresponding to each respective level. Similar to the exterior sign, they will have digital LEDs that are customizable to the building or the meeting that's happening in place. It was very, it was a high priority, design priority within our subcommittee to make sure that each of these meeting rooms had the highest level of technology. So each of these meeting rooms will have its own customizable LED screen as well. Basically, all of these signs will tie into the building system to allow for the flexibility that the building inherently has built into it. So, cost estimate, our budget since we started this project was at $194,008, $820, so $194 million. Our latest estimate in January of this year came in at $193,474,089, or approximately $500,000 under. We have a list of alternates that we're including in the bid, in the bid documents that were decided not only between our design team, but with our respective subcommittee. I'll walk through those alternates as well. Some of them are internal to the building, and some of them are the external forces that you've seen in some of these renderings, such as the parking and the bridge, for example. The first alternate that we have in the bid documents are the operable walls in the exhibit hall. The way that the building is designed, it should be able to divide into four equal halls, all with their own access and amenities. So one of the easiest alternates that we came up with was to eliminate two of these walls. All of the infrastructure will still be in place. It is just future-proofing the building to allow these walls to be added at any date. This is something that we do in many convention centers. We did this in Anaheim, and with capital improvements money, they purchased that walls almost immediately after the building opened. So again, it's not something that's unfamiliar to us. These are in no particular order to say. The second alternate is the surface lot to the south. Our initial scope of work was basically the northern curb of Sixth Street and the southern curb of Fourth Street, sorry, the northern curb of Fourth Street. So this alternate would be the completion of the parking lot that would be just south of Sixth Street. This parking lot would not only serve the convention center, but it would serve all of the other amenities in the district, such as the park, and the streetcar, and the hotel, and parking for future arena events. The second alternate that relates directly to that would be the completion of Sixth Street. As I stated earlier, our scope ends at the northern curb. If there's money left over in the bid, it would be logical to complete Sixth Street along with the parking garage associated with it. As I stated, our scope does do go to the northern edge of Fourth Street. One of our alternates is a reinvigorated Fourth Street, something more than just asphalt and curb. We would envision drivable pavers there with removable bollards on the east and west ends that would allow Fourth Street to be blocked off for the interaction between the convention center and the hotel. You can see special events happening down there. I know to Mike Carrier and his team, having this relationship between the two facilities is something that would be extremely desirable in the industry. Through the course of design, it came to our attention that there is potential to work out a deal for Veolia Energy to supply the power to this facility. I understand that there is a deal that is in the works that is not complete as of today, but it's very close. But with that being said, we carried as an alternate the ability to put a central utility plant in the building. So the building is essentially designed to either have our own equipment or to accept Veolia. So at any given moment, if anything happens with the Veolia contract over the lifespan of the building, all of this equipment can be plugged into place to keep the building running independently.
And right now, we are negotiating with Veolia. That's what the report said. It's the most cost-effective way to do so. We don't expect that there will be any holdups. So this is the largest alternate. We do not anticipate awarding it. But if something were to fall through with the Veolia contract, we didn't want to be unprepared and not have the ability to do so. And by the way, if we do have to put the equipment in, it affects the, it's a little bit cheaper on utility rates down the line. So there's a trade-off, and we've done a full cost analysis of it, and it's cheaper total cost in to go with Veolia with the rates that we've got proposed. But there would be, even though you're paying the upfront capital costs, it would be cheaper operating costs as you went on the line if we had our own central plant.
Thank you, City Manager.
So there are just, there are trade-offs here. But right now, we anticipate having a contract with Veolia, and that we would not be awarding this alternate.
Yeah, this has been, this has been studied quite frequently over the duration of the design to vet all the options.
A lot.
And the last, not the last alternate, but one of the alternates is the vertical shading fins. Architecturally, we think they're desirable because they do add a level of sophistication and intricacy to the building. They will help cut down on glare and the overall appearance of the facility. However, in our energy modeling studies, the actual amount of people in these buildings is enough to bring the heat in the building enough, more than the solar gain from the exterior. So regardless if they're on there or not, the mechanical systems will still be compensating for the amount of people in the building. However, they're an alternate because they're not 100% needed, but as an architecture team and as a subcommittee, we do believe that they do add a level of sophistication and architectural design to the facility. And the bridge to the hotel, I know that this has been talked about frequently. We've designed it, our building has always been designed to accept this bridge. Of course, it's been designed with all of the fire regulations in mind for fire trucks and how they access around the building. And as I said earlier, the Omni team and their architecture team has been willing to coordinate with us, and so I know that they're designing now to accept the other end of this bridge as well if this alternate would be taken. When we say smart bars in the ballroom ceiling, this is just another level of technology that we've implemented in the building to make this a Class 1 facility. Typically, when meeting planners come in, they bring in all of their own lighting, trusses, stage design, and it requires a redundant system in the facility. By doing the smart bar system, essentially it would eliminate meeting planners bringing in their own stuff. They could come in and plug directly into the ceiling and interact with the existing system that's in place. Again, this is not something that is 100% needed. This is just another option that would make the convention center that much more flexible and desirable. And the last alternate is an alternate mainly because of timing. This is something that was brought to our attention early this year, and it's an assisted listening loop system. So what this is, is essentially a network of copper wires that are installed above the slab below the floor that transmit a frequency to an audiovisual unit in the room that then rebroadcast that frequency to individuals with assisted hearing devices. We, it was brought to our attention that this was installed in a MAPS project recently to much success. It was just too late to get it into our final drawing, so we've drawn it as an alternate to include it in the drawing set. So that's why we have it as an alternate in this package. So, we'll talk schedule quickly. Tomorrow is February 28th. Pending approval today, we will advertise for bids. Bids will be due on April 25th. There will be special subcommittee meetings to review the bids and to go over the alternates in early May. May 22nd, we would present the construction contract to the subcommittee, which would then queue Citizens Advisory Board that following Thursday, and we would be back in front of you with a contractor on June 5th. A notice to proceed for the contractor on June 6th if everything goes accordingly, with a 24-month construction duration is what we're planning. We've, in the contract, written an early substantial completion incentive of $5,000 a day, up to 30 days maximum for the contractor. That is also reciprocal on the other end, where if they do go over, they will be paying that $5,000 a day in liquidated damages. That's my last slide. Before I open up to questions, I just want to say that Populous, on behalf of Populous and our design team, you know, we do these projects all over the world, and we've been here for over two years now, some of us even longer, and it's been a wonderful experience. The relationships that we've built with our subcommittee, Citizens Advisory Board, and with you all and our local partners, it's just been an excellent. If every project could go like this, it would, it would just be a wonderful, wonderful way to live. So just want to say thank you on behalf of our design team.
You mentioned working with Omni Hotels concerning the Convention Hotel. Can you tell us a little bit about the coordination efforts, the interaction, how that relationship is working?
Yeah, so, you know, we initially met with Omni about a year or so ago when they were first selected, and it was before they had an architect on board. So they were very familiar with our design, and they knew that they were going to have to hire an architect that could work well with us and coordinate along the way. So they brought their architect on board maybe six months ago or so. So we've met with them in person So we've met with them in person a few times. We've coordinated with them on go-to meetings and phone calls. Basically, took our drawings and married them up with their drawings and really talked about what this relationship could be. Recently, I've been in contacts with their lead designer because as they're designing the interiors of the building, they want their interiors to not be exactly like ours, but they want them to interact well with each other. So we've been exchanging design conversation on how the two facilities can, you know, basically be viewed as a contiguous facility with a little bit different identities. So I will say, it's been, it's been great. They've been good to work with, very open, and no real issues that we see from a coordination perspective. Yep.
Yes, Adam, I'd just like to say thank you for this whole process. And when we look back at those design principles on the first slide, and as you said, realize how they've come to fruition and how each one means so much more today than it did when they started. It's been a really enjoyable process to see the thoughtful attention to Oklahoma City. And I really do think we're going to end up with a product that is very, very special.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ed?
You said that there's another MAPS project that used the enhancements for the hearing-impaired...
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah. So is it the same kind of copper, the same system?
Well, same functional. It worked the same way.
Yeah, so it's, we based the design off of the system in the Civic Center, and because we've only, because this is a competitively big project, we had to specify a performance specification to allow multiple people to bid on it. But that system that was installed there is what we use as our basis of design.
Was that online in the Civic Center?
The ribbon cutting was yesterday.
Oh, it just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been up, but it's actually been functional for several weeks.
Great. Thank you.
It's getting ready for review. You've been working that's better.
Nice.
All right, any other questions? Thanks for your continued work. Look forward to those bids.
We also have Eric Winter with us this morning to talk about Item Y, and that's 16 newly start resurfacing projects from the sales tax that's been approved by the Sales Tax Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item that you have before you this morning, Item Y, is our first item that comes to us from the Citizens Advisory Board for the 2017 sales tax. As you recall, with the passing of the 2017 bond and the 2017 sales tax, with the beginning of collections of the sales tax on January 1, we did receive that first check from the Tax Commission in an amount of approximately $4.9 million. So in our commitment to the citizens, we are actually ready to proceed with a number of projects. And so what you have before you today is a recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Board from their January 25th meeting where they are recommending 16 projects for your consideration. The list is attached to the memo, and what you'll find is there are two projects in each ward. These are two arterial street resurfacing projects, and these are actually locations you might already be familiar. The list that the board had looked at was one that was put before you as a part of the 2017 bond program. These are the top two candidate projects that were selected for the bond that are now being recommended to you by the Sales Tax Committee for immediate implementation. So as we look at how best to address the street needs, as we look to address the top citizen priority of improving roads, these are those worst roads, two in each ward for a total of $18.9 million for your approval. So with your consideration today, we have been working this past year, staff and putting together unit price contracting that have multiple contractors on contract. We actually have another item in the agenda today to release additional bids for additional contracting, knowing that we have a lot of potential this year to do a lot of work on streets. And these are those $10 million unit price contracts as we have approvals like this where we can immediately without additional bidding send these projects to crews at these locations as they're available. What you can expect in the future from the Citizens Advisory Board, they're meeting again in just about two weeks. They're working on some prioritization decisions, and hopefully we will secure that with them very shortly. I would say in the next two meetings, they would be looking at that next list of projects that might not only just include street projects, but also streetscapes are soon to come. As soon as you're able to receive some recommendations from staff on BIKwakoc, you'll see additional recommendations on trails, sidewalks, and bike lanes. But this spring, we have a number of additional projects, not just these 16, coming to you so that we can expedite the expenditure of the sales taxes as they're received. It'll take three sales tax collections to actually fund these projects. And so we have a couple of months to get that next series of projects through the advisory board and bring those to the council and not have any delay in the delivery of Better Streets, Safer City. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have about these projects or anything that maybe the board has done today.
Yeah, Mark?
Tell us a little bit about the advisory board, when it meets, where it meets. Can the public attend? Can the public send emails about roads they have concerns about?
Absolutely. So the board actually meets here in Council chambers on the first Monday of every month. They've only had their first official meeting just a few weeks ago, and their next meeting will be here the first Monday in March. I wish I could recall what day that is.
Yeah, actually, that was our second meeting. We did have a first meeting that was a couple hour, about a half a day workshop going over the program.
We did have a workshop also. But they do meet here. It is open to the public. It is also televised. The meetings are public, open meetings. So staff is available, and really, we have some very good dialogue at that first two meetings, the workshop and the first official meeting that was here. So we'd invite those to go to okc.gov for the meeting agendas and information. And if there's questions, there's also contact information online as well.
The board's very engaged.
So Eric, these 16 projects were on the GEO bond, is that what you said? And we're expediting them?
Yes.
And so, then, so how does the financing work?
So what will simply happen is we will, we will progress those projects in the bond, not waiting on a bond sale this year or next year and be able to get these out very quickly. The bond monies then would go into more of the unlisted category to be used on additional streets as a part of the bond project. So as we identify the use of either unlisted or surplus funds from the bond issue, they will remain in streets categories. So this $18.9 million would remain in a streets category to be spent on streets in Oklahoma City, but we had identified new locations for council consideration.
They'll be backfilled with the next lower priorities as we go on down the line.
Okay, so you...
And decided by this council.
So you're expanding the unlisted budget by the same amount in the bond?
We're just retaining the monies in the streets category, but yes, we'll be bringing those recom, yes. In effect, it basically expands the unlisted total.
Because we didn't know at the election time whether the sales tax would be, would be passed. We had a little bit of a, so this is how we're responding.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Eric, thank you. And the bond projects are more, are higher priority than the, than what, what didn't make the bond list?
We're taking the higher, some higher priority projects out of the bond list to get those done quickly.
Right.
And then as time goes on, and when they become available, we'll take other priorities and add them back into the GEO bonds, off, probably off the same list. But in a few years, those priorities may change a little bit, so as streets secure at a different rate, traffic volumes vary.
So how, how many of the high priority bond are we planning on doing with this sales tax before we could consider new projects like streetscapes or...
We don't know at this point in time. There'll be, there'll be some recommendations coming out of the committee at that point in time, but we anticipate there'll be some more.
So right now, it's just the 16 that you have before you today.
Right.
We will engage that dialogue at this next meeting, and they may choose to have us revisit that. So the board at this next meeting has asked for the 2017 lists, which they're being provided. But they're also looking at that complete unfunded list, those projects that weren't considered with the bond as well, so that they can look at both simultaneously.
All right. Eric, thanks. Anything else on the consent document?
Counselors, yeah. I'll tell the counsel.
All right. Larry, you want to talk about AH?
Yeah. Ben, are you all going to do any presentations today on, on what we did in the Economic Development Trust this past week?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, then I...
We're doing the one on Costco.
On the concurrents.
No, no, this is not Costco. AH is a company, McLaren Plastics, and it happens to be in Ward 2. And I checked with, with Ed, and he said, "Go ahead and brief the council on this. It's all right." This is probably one of the first GOBON projects in Ward 2. It's in an interesting area. It's an area that was one of the manufacturing focal points in bygone years between Tulsa and Portland and between 36th and 39th. In the past, people have said that the incentive programs on the GOBONs are corporate welfare, and they're only available for to make the big companies bigger and their rich richer. This goes against that, if you will. This is a project whereby they're planning to add 58 jobs over the next five years with an $80,000 performance-oriented payment for jobs created. And the, it's a high-skilled type of operation on thermoplastics, and it'll be located in that area out on Northwest 36th between Portland and Tulsa. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thanks, Larry. While we're on AH, John, did you want to talk about AH1?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 7AJ1 is the, sorry, grabbed the wrong one. 7AH1 is the redevelopment of 1726, 1742 Northeast 23rd Street. So I just wanted to pinpoint that out. This is a northeast Renaissance TIF project. February the 20th, the Daily Oklahoman did a story, News OK did a story about lending in the minority community. The title of the article that they posted, "For People of Color Banks Are Shutting the Door." It was a story that pinpointed what was happening in underserved communities throughout the United States. And it talked about how, and they pinpointed out 61, this particular national study pointed out 61 communities across the country, and northeast Oklahoma City was pointed out as being a red line district. And so I think with the city support of, of the redevelopment of northeast Oklahoma City, hopefully, one day that, that will change. So I did want to, again, point that out.
All right. And Ed, you want to talk about AH2?
I just have some questions about the West Village project, which is a $4 million TIF allocation to the Fred Jones Avenue Partners LLC, which I assume is Fred Hall, Hall Capital, that are building 345 apartments, 805 parking spaces, 9,200 square feet of commercial space.
That's correct.
Originally, this was a 60s, I'm, I think there's a 33-page agreement, but I didn't have that in my packet, so I'm trying to catch up. But originally, it was a $66 million project. So they secured $66 million in HUD financing, which I now understand is like HUD is cosigning their loan that allows them to get 40-year terms. That's 66 million, and then we're contributing 4 million. And then now, it's changing, and they're saying that the project cost is not 66 million anymore, but 77 million.
That's right. When this originally was presented to us back in 2016, the project was around $66 million. And upon review, we went through their normal process, and the recommendation was to provide them eight million, or $4 million over an eight-year period, which is basically as they pay their taxes, we will provide a portion of it back to them over time. Subsequent to that, one of the requirements of our contract is they have to provide us the latest sources and uses document that provides where they're getting all their financing and how they're spending all their money. What that we have in this agreement, they have to spend, the project now is at $77 million. And so their loan that they have now is around 85% of the project cost. And so upon completion of this project, they have to document certain things. One is they have to have 40% of their facility occupied, and we'll go through various checks. But one of, the final one would be, they will have to document the expenditure of their capital to us from a third party, and we will verify that. And that's what we do in a lot of our TIF projects. And what we do is we try to look for the change in their equity position on a project because the assistance is provided on them based on their returns on their equity. And so we will evaluate that when the project's complete.
So because between the HUD financing and the 4 million, we're giving them more than what they said originally it was required.
Right. The project, the project budget has increased.
So you would audit that?
Yes.
And if they didn't spend the extra 11 million, we wouldn't give them the TIF allocation?
If their equity position changes materially, which is more than 10%, we have the right to modify and reduce their equi, reduce the level of assistance that they need.
Does that come back to us, or how does, or...
Yeah, I mean, we will evaluate it, and then, in this case, we'll provide them $500,000 a year, that's the cap, over an eight-year period. If, if we deem that, that would provide them a, let's say, inappropriate return based on the changes of the project. We do have the flexibility within our agreement to reduce that $500,000 down to a more appropriate amount.
Can you explain the difference between this project and, say, the Metropolitan Apartments, which to me on paper looks very, very similar? 345 apartments versus 330, 805 parking spaces versus about 600, 9,000 square feet of commercial space versus 8,000. Metropolitan just sold for a record amount, $64 million, almost $200,000 per unit, no TIF financing.
I think the difference in that is, on the Metropolitan, there was one parking garage, and they wrapped their apartments around it, which is the most efficient way to do development.
Right.
In this case, there are three smaller parking garages. You've got, they're, they're very inefficient, but when you're trying to wrap them around the entire block, that is what makes that more inefficient. Because when you build three, three garages, let's say 250 apiece, those are way more inefficient than a 600-space parking garage.
So we're, it, it almost seems, I mean, the Metropolitan, more aesthetically and planning-wise, it seems better to wrap it around. Here, we, I mean, they're not particularly aesthetically pleasing, the standalone parking garages. Are we, we're incentivizing standalone, we're helping and incentivize standalone parking garages as opposed to wraparound design?
Well, you, based on the, the way the layout is over there, you can't do that. If you want to get that level of density, which we all want to get, you had to provide parking at, on all three sides, you know, north, on the north side, the east side, and on the south side.
So that, that's the central reason that we're, we're giving Hall Capital $4 million, and we didn't give the Metropolitan a TIF allocation is the parking garage?
It's, it's a total project that comes in. And by the way, Metropolitan did come in and, and, and looked at some, we were not able to determine that there was a need based upon the conditions that were out there, so we weren't able to come to up with a deal on Metropolitan to do that, and they went on with, with the project. Because it's just, it's, it's different market conditions, it's different land costs, it's different layout that's in the area. It's hard, you, you know, they're both large apartment complexes, so there's some similarity, but there's a lot of differences, too.
Would you concede that, I mean, one's 330 apartments, one's 345, that, and there's clearly a huge demand for that? I mean, it sold for record amounts last year to Widener Apartment Homes, $64 million. I mean, the, the argument is this wouldn't happen but for the TIF allocation, right? That there's something that may not be identical, but it's very, very similar in the Metropolitan Apartments, which is selling for a record amount of money. I'm just, I'm questioning that this wouldn't happen but for the $4 million allocation, which, we, we've done this for years. I can't prove it one way, you can't prove it the other. But it just, on paper, it looks, it looks similar, and, and I'm not understanding the $4 million discrepancy. And this is a time, by the way, where storm clouds are gathering at the legislature. There's a bill in front of the legislature that would mandate counties and school boards sign off on any new TIFs. I think there's an initiative petition that's either circulating or about to circulate in Norman that would mandate any new TIF district go to a vote of the people. I don't, it's very complicated, so people are, it's difficult to figure out, but I think at the legislature, they're starting to figure out that when you have a billion to a billion and a half dollar TIF budget in downtown Oklahoma City and all the TIFs in Oklahoma City, and Norman is doing a $50 million TIF to try and get big box retailers in a new arena in Tulsa, and they're proliferating, that there is some impact when you take all that property tax off the rolls on, say, education through the state, where you have all, obviously, we're in a crisis, you have four-day school weeks throughout the state. Do, do any of us understand, as we, as we sit here today, and I've asked this for years, I think I even came to the Economic Development Trust more than a year ago and asked, do any of us understand what impact there is of what we're doing here today on, not Oklahoma City School Districts, I-89? I think I'm starting to understand that when we get them to the table, that we can protect them, or they can maybe even maybe do better than they, than they would otherwise. But what impact there is on education through the state when you have all these TIF districts proliferating? Do we know what impact this $4 million has on the state education, school funding formula? Does anyone, anyone, can anyone explain that in city government?
I don't think there's been a macro study done on that at this time.
And so I, so I guess we'll, I guess we'll just keep going like this without... And so I guess we'll, I guess we'll just keep going like this without understanding exactly what impact there is at the state level. I'm just, what I'm trying to warn, I guess, is that I think people at the state legislature are starting to figure this out, and they are going to, there is going to be an impact. And so we want to make everyone count, and this one, just to me, it doesn't pass the bite before test. Thanks. So if we could, so I can extend my streak of eight-to-one votes, if we could pull this out and let me, thank you.
Meg, Ed.
Ed, if I could, I do think there was a real business model difference between these two projects. The Metropolitan never intended to hold the project. It was their intention to build it and sell it right away, and that is not permitted under the Tiff regulations. There's a holding period.
See, I think you're right, Meg. I think that, I mean, to me, that seems like that was the difference, is that they wanted to develop it and flip it.
And sell it, right.
And so that versus the parking garage seems to me to be the central, yeah.
I certainly think that was a big part of it, just a completely different business model.
All right. Continuing with comments, yeah, Larry?
On this, could I interject a question?
Sure.
This particular project was reviewed by the Economic Development Trust before it was brought up here today, correct? Well, it was, it was last week, but with the original agreement with this group was in 16. So they've begun construction based upon an assumption that we would finalize.
And the Economic Development Trust, for those who are interested, is an open meeting, so citizens can come and ask questions during that time. Before the project gets to the Economic Development Trust, it goes through a Tiff Review Committee, does it not?
It does.
Is that also a public meeting?
It is.
There's plenty of opportunity for people who want to get down to the nuts and bolts to do that research before it gets up to us. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right. Meg, you wanted to talk about Item C.
I did just want to really thank the City Manager's Office and Assistant City Manager Barry for extending the contract with the Center for Employment Opportunities through the end of the fiscal year. We worked out a small contract with this group that provides day employment for folks with criminal backgrounds, and it's been very successful for us in our Public Works Department, utilities, and some others. And it's, you know, just another tiny piece of working in this area of criminal justice reform and some diversion programs to help put people back to work right away, and I'm glad the city's participating.
And Todd, you want to talk about AP and AS?
Thank you, Mayor. Both these items are in regards to the Lake Draper Trail. One is a release of a bid, and the other one is the awarding of a bid. So I really just wanted to mention those, so people know that those trails are going to be happening sooner rather than later, and I, for one, are very excited about them. Thank you.
Going to be a great addition. All right, we ready to vote the consent docket? We've had a motion and a second.
Except for AH2.
Yes. Yes. So why don't we vote on, you want to vote on AH2 first?
Sure.
We'll vote on AH2 first. Is there a motion to pass AH2? Is there a second? All right, we're voting on AH2, and it passes 7-2. And now we'll vote on the rest of the consent docket, which already had a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes 9-0. That puts us on to the concurrence docket.
Hey, we do have a presentation this morning on the concurrence docket regarding Costco.
Okay.
Good morning. We have a presentation to review the item on your agenda day, which is an authorization to, a resolution authorizing the General Manager of the Economic Development Trust to negotiate with Costco to develop a store here in Oklahoma City. To start off, I'd like to introduce Mike Stratus, who is with Intrepid Properties, who assists Costco with their real estate development projects around the country.
Again, my name's Mike Stratus, 2311 West 22nd Street, Oakbrook, Illinois. I am Costco's site selector for Oklahoma and other Midwestern states. We're pleased to be here today to talk about a project we're undertaking on the north side of your town. So for those of you who don't know about Costco, Costco's actually the second-largest retailer in the world behind Walmart. We're the 16th largest company in the Fortune 500, and up until recently, we were the largest publicly traded company in the state of Washington. Last year, we had about $126 billion in sales, which comprises about 2.3 million transactions a day. We have 225,000 employees worldwide. The concept, it's membership-based merchandising with 90 million cardholders and a 90% renewal rate. The renewal rate, we think, is the highest in the world as far as membership retail is based. Our products are for businesses and individuals, and we also, the basic model is that we have a lot of product categories, but we have limited choices. So if you want mustard, for instance, you have a choice, a gallon of French's or a two-pack of grapeau. If you want 30 flavors and 20 sizes, you'll go to your grocery store. Average product count is only 3,000 or 4,000 items, and to give you some context, you know, an average supermarket has about 60,000 items, and a Super Walmart or a Super Target has closer to 200,000. So we don't really cannibalize any other retailers to any significant degree. Relative to warehouses, we have 746 worldwide. We operate in 11 countries. Most recently, last July, we opened in Reykjavik, Iceland, of all places. We have current plans to go into China and expand more broadly in Asia and in Europe. This is our site plan, and again, it's on the north side, it's up on Western and Kilpatrick Turnpike. We are under contract currently, completing our due diligence studies, and kind of a typical Costco prototype. We also have a fueling facility on the east side of the site. Our operating hours, Monday to Friday, 10 to 8:30, so we had no significant traffic to the morning peak times. Saturdays, 9:30 to 6:00 and 10:00 to 6:00. About 60% of our traffic, generally speaking, is on the weekends, so when the road systems can best accommodate our needs. The fuel facility opens at 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM on the weekends and closes about an hour after the building the whole week. Nationally, I think the number one thing Costco is known for, one of the number one things, other than our value proposition, is our employment. We are probably the highest retail wage payer in the nation, generally speaking. About 150 to 200 employees, starting wage, company-wide, worldwide, 1350 an hour. Cashiers, after five years, make about $54,000. These are all self-explanatory. Average wage, $23 an hour, and the turnover after a year is only 5%, which is, we also, virtually all of these, we think, are presidential setting in the retail universe. All of our full-time and part-time employees are eligible for benefits, and 98% of them are enrolled. To point to, point out that, you know, probably 50% of these employees will be part-time. Our part-time employees are guaranteed 20 hours a week after six months and the opportunity to avail themselves of those benefits.
So just to kind of go over why this project qualifies under the retail incentive policy that the City Council adopted several years ago. Your policy provides that we can provide retail incentives to projects that are new to Oklahoma City and that are a destination retailer, and Costco meets both of those requirements. Costco has a very large trade area. Their total trade area is about an hour's drive, so, you know, that helps to meet, that one-hour drive time meets the destination retailer or a regional retailer even, which is also part of our policy. You know, as we all know, the city is heavily reliant on sales tax revenues to support its operating budget. This project, these kinds of projects, any kind of retail project, helps us to grow our sales tax base and to protect our sales tax base in the future. Now, research shows that about 41% of the sales associated with Costco will be new to Oklahoma City. There are already approximately 27, 2,800 Costco members already in Oklahoma City who are buying online or going to Dallas or Tulsa. Again, the trade area that I mentioned already, and they anticipate that they'll have about 900,000 annual visitors. The store economic impact, the sales are estimated to be between $80 million in year one and $140 million in year six. They are a part of the general merchandise category when we look at categories of sales tax revenues. Our tax base in Oklahoma City for the general merchandise category is about $1.4 billion, and by year six, Costco will be somewhere between 7% and 10% of that category. The net new revenues to Oklahoma City, the general fund, it's estimated will be between $600,000 and $1.1 million. It will also benefit all of the dedicated tax sources that the city has, the Better Streets Safer City Tax, the Police and Fire Sales Tax, and the Zoo Sales Tax. And just as a reminder, when we structure our incentive deals, we only look at the general fund portion of the sales tax. We never include those other dedicated taxes as a part of that. So the key business terms that we're looking at negotiating with Costco would include a performance-based incentive not to exceed $3 million. That would be paid out over a 10-year term. They would get 85% of the net new sales tax created, so it's 85% of the 41% net new sales tax revenues. There's an annual cap of $1.2 million, and we do anticipate that this project will pay out in about four to five years. I think that's about it. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but right now, the item before you today is just an authorization to negotiate. We will be bringing back the final agreement with Costco once those negotiations are completed.
I have a question and a comment. In your preliminary discussions, have you talked about the membership, whether the membership is, you can charge sales tax on the membership?
I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head. We can find out.
Okay. So here's my, here's my comment, is, and why I'm opposed to this kind of incentive for Costco. I think it's more useful to think of Costco as a membership club than as your traditional retailer. What Costco's business model does, basically, is it uses very, very low discounted prices to get people to pay either $60 for a basic membership or $120 for an executive membership. In the first two fiscal quarters of 2017, their net sales was about $56.5 billion. The merchandise cost and the sales expense was a little bit more than that, at $57.13 a billion. So they're basically losing, they're selling at a small loss when it comes to selling goods. If you look at their revenue, say, 2014, it was $2.4 billion. Their operating profit is $3.2 billion. In other words, 75% of their earnings is coming from their membership fees. In 2015, the Oklahoma Tax Commission ruled that you cannot charge sales tax on these membership fees for these discount buying clubs. So basically, what I see is that they come in, they heavily discount, they sell at a price that our small retailers, our mom-and-pop stores, and even some of our bigger retailers can't compete against, because they're selling at a loss. And then they're selling memberships, which we don't get the sales tax on. Oklahoma Tax Commission has said we don't get the sales tax on the part of the business that's profitable for them. The biggest driver of membership growth is new warehouses. So if you're looking at this company, which has a market cap of $83 billion, right, and is 73% owned by Wall Street institutions, it's the Wall Street institutions that are pulling the strings here. They tell, they are going to reward or punish Costco's share price based on growth. So yesterday, they increased by 1.5%. That's like $1.4 billion yesterday. They are, that's what's driving the decision-making, not $3 million from Oklahoma City. It's the billions of dollars in share price, which is where the real money is and where the real control is. So their argument for coming to Oklahoma City, or how they expect to do in Oklahoma City, is the very same argument that you would use against providing an incentive. When they expect 900,000 annual visitors, when they expect the 2,777 Oklahoma City, people in Oklahoma City that already have memberships that they have to get to renew, when they expect $140 million in sales by year six, this is going to happen anyway. Oklahoma City is the 38th-largest market, a million people in the greater Oklahoma City metro area. There's no way the Wall Street institutions would say, "Don't go to Oklahoma City," right? For their growth model, for their membership model to grow, it's insane to just cede this territory to Target, Sam's Club, not go to the 38th-largest market. So they are coming to Oklahoma City. The question is, once they come to Oklahoma City, do they come to this location on Western? Which is curious, because it has a creek going through it. It's really difficult to develop. There's lots and lots of land in Oklahoma City or Edmund or other places that would be much, much easier than this location on Kilpatrick Turnpike that has a creek going through it. The argument is, well, if we don't give them the $3 million, then they'll just go to Edmund or they'll go somewhere else. My experience with the 30% to 40% that Roy Williams was talking about, people coming from the rural community, because a lot of people come to Oklahoma City, a lot of medical, you know, everybody in the state is coming to the VA Hospital. Everybody from the state is coming to Integra's Hospital in Mercy. They like to come on the highway and then continue on the highway. They don't like to go through the streets of Edmund. That's my anecdotal experience over 20 years of talking to people coming to Oklahoma City. They don't like to get off the highway. That, I think Costco knows that. I think that's why they picked this location on Western despite it being a difficult. They want to be on the Kilpatrick Turnpike. The Kilpatrick Turnpike is getting extended through southwest Oklahoma City. It will connect more people to this location. The bottom line is that if this location on Kilpatrick Turnpike performs better, gets more memberships than a location in Edmund, then it won't matter if Edmund gives $3 million or $5 million or $7 million. They're not going to take it, because the bigger impact is on the share, on the stock price. And that is not $3 million versus, Edmund could give them $7 million. They're not going to take it if the store is doing better at Kilpatrick Turnpike and generating $140 million by year six, which then they get to take to Wall Street, and Wall Street rewards them with a higher share price. So they're coming to Oklahoma City, and they're coming to this location. I've heard about this Kilpatrick Turnpike, I mean, five years. They want to be on the Kilpatrick Turnpike. It's going to happen regardless, and we should not be paying for things that are going to happen anyway.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kathy? All right. Ready to vote the concurrence docket?
Can we get one more eight-one vote out of this? Can we pull this out?
Yeah, sure. All right, is there a motion then on Item K of the concurrence docket?
Seven.
Is there a second? All right, vote on Item K, and it passes 7-2. All right, we have a motion on the rest of the concurrence docket?
Thank you.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes 9-0. We're on to Item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 3. It's an ABC issue at 6220 Southwest 3rd Street. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is adding a restaurant in the Westgate Marketplace area. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
And if the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is an ABC issue in Ward 2. The address is 3325 North Classen Boulevard. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? I move for approval.
Are you speaking in favor of the zoning?
Yes, yes.
You might want to stay quiet. We have a motion and a second to approve it. Is that what you want?
That's what we want.
Okay. All right. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. You're good. All right. All right, I've seen that turn on people before. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward Six. It's an ABC issue at 1201 West Reno Avenue.
And the applicant.
And the applicant is here, Meg.
That's probably a good idea. This may be the weirdest thing on the agenda of all day. Josh, are you here?
This is David Webster that has signed up to speak, representing the company. You want to come up?
Yeah, you want to come up and talk to us? Sorry, I was looking for Josh. He was applicant, I guess.
Oh, it's okay.
You want to tell us a little bit about this project?
So we're a Canada-based company, and up there, we're, well, it's bad axe throwing. We do like special events, like team billing activities, birthday parties, bachelor parties, bachelorette parties, anything like that, kind of like, like tom golf kind of stuff like that. Up in Canada, they approve like BYOB, like people get to bring their own alcohol to the thing. Down here, it's a little different. We have a little bit more rules and stuff. So we're looking to also build, like, sell some craft breweries around the area. That's what we're going to start out with, hopefully start out with selling, is that kind of stuff.
Is there a way that we separate the alcohol consumption with the activity, or is it all just sort of thrown together? Well, unintended.
It's, I guess, rubbed together. I mean, there's going to be a time where, you know, you stop letting people throw axes when they start becoming quite intoxicated, or intoxicated at all. But, I mean, it would be together. They're not going to be throwing axes with a beer in their hand, or alcohol in their hand at all. But, yeah, they would be together.
Is there some kind of training for people, or is there somebody there watching this?
Yeah, so as coaches, that's what I am, is I'm a coach. So I come through, I go through the waiver with customers when they come in. I will then show them, you know, some safety things that we go through, and, you know, kind of go over, say, hey, you don't throw axes at each other, and, you know, show them the proper way to pull it out of the wood, once it hits the target, that kind of stuff. And then we go over kind of all the rules, and then I teach them how to throw an axe. And we do have a coach on each lane supervising the activity, and they said that we would have a bartender also on the clock at the same time. So it wouldn't be, the coach would be serving the alcohol. It'd be two different people at each time.
And you say there are others of these in Canada and other places?
Yeah, we have the largest axe-throwing company. We have nine locations in Canada and seven or eight in the United States. And there's actually a axe-throwing company up in Tulsa. There's also a few down in Dallas and scattered across. It's actually like a growing sport.
Do we have a safety record of some kind?
Yeah, we do. Yes, we do.
There were no protests related to this. Is there anybody here today to speak in opposition to it? I know that the Ward Two Planning Commissioner was not in favor of this.
Let me hear a little more about the axe-throwing aspect.
Okay, so.
So you're throwing the axes at?
A target.
A target, and so it's like a round target, like you might throw darts or something like that?
Exactly, yes. Yes, sir. We would, you throw from about 15 feet away, so, I mean, you're not going to get the axe coming back at you from like ricochet or anything. It's just something that, you know, they started in Canada, I guess it was some kind of like thing they did in the backyard, like we do down here, like with horseshoes or something.
Yeah, and so, and there's no specific track record of unsafe activity, and there's not some long list of people who've been hospitalized as a result of throwing axes?
Not at all, no, no. It actually, you know, solves like, you know, like conflicts between each other. Nobody leaves unhappy.
Yeah, and Tulsa already has?
Tulsa has a location called Woody's.
Okay. And so the issue really before us today is whether or not we want to grant alcohol sales. I guess, apparently axe-throwing is fine, but the issue is.
She was delicious. Oh, alcohol.
We're not here to determine whether or not axe-throwing is an appropriate activity. We're determined whether or not this location is suitable for alcohol. Is that right?
That is what I understand, because it's in this light industrial and downtown district on Reno Avenue, it requires an overlay.
Right. Okay, so, and once we put the zoning in place, it's probably going to be hard to extract, but I assume if the axe-throwing aspect of this endeavor, you know, got out of hand, we would have opportunities from a public safety aspect to come back later and deal with it. So it's easy to concentrate on the axe-throwing, but what we're really talking about is alcohol sales. Okay.
You have a quick question for Meg. This site is fairly close to Farmer's Market, is it not?
Yes.
Does that influence our decision at all? I just a question.
There'll be apples on people's heads.
Please don't go there. I shouldn't avoid that.
I don't know.
You know, this is an area, Larry, that is growing into, you know, some of these different kinds of places. You may remember that I was a little bit nervous about Powerhouse when it first opened. It's got an ABC three attached to it, and I was somewhat worried about that, and instead it's really been a great catalyst for other things happening in the neighborhood. I think this is really kind of weird idea.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, the alcohol sales seems pretty appropriate for the location and the other activity going on.
But, you know, I remember a year ago, maybe more, we had the Wilshire Gun issue where we had a gun range, and, you know, the reason I ended up voting in favor of allowing them to have alcohol is that they had all of these safety measures in place to where once you purchase alcohol, you can't shoot guns anymore. It doesn't seem like, in this case, there's those safety measures are there, and still it's an axe, and that can do, it can be used as a weapon for sure. So to me, it doesn't seem like the greatest idea without some actual safety measures that.
So you're saying axe-throwing's?
It's fine.
Could be fine.
Yeah, but.
But, well, why are we putting alcohol aside it?
Yeah, right.
That's a legitimate concern. Anybody else?
Do you have, I mean, would you let somebody that was inebriated?
No, definitely not, no. It's, you know, we have like a zero tolerance policy on like horseplay altogether, so when people start goofing off, you tell them like, hey, chill, calm down. And especially if they do start getting, you know, intoxicated, you can, you know, have them stop drinking, have them sit down, have them sit out.
Well, talk about your security then. What's security like?
Security?
Yeah, well, do you have a bouncer? Do you have a person who might be an after-hours police officer hired?
No, we do not. We just have four coaches hired that stay down here.
And so the coaches are people like you?
Just like me, yes, sir.
Who are to teach?
Teach and coach.
Okay, the activity?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I think, I'd like to ask that we maybe defer this for two weeks. I'd like to talk a little bit more about how we might manage this a little bit better. I think the analogy of the Wilshire Gun Club is one that's been in my mind. I know people had issues with it, but we were able to resolve it, and we haven't had a chance to talk about this. I did ask Josh to call me yesterday, and I haven't heard from him, so if you don't mind, I'd like to defer this for two weeks.
Second.
Okay. All right, so we're not saying yes, we're not saying no. We're just going to talk about it again and perhaps get some more information, and feel free to provide information if you have safety records or anything that might address some of the concerns that you heard. It might help your cause.
Yeah, I believe Josh has.
All right. How about a motion then that's made to defer? Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. The item's deferred for two weeks. All right, item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 2127 East Memorial Road. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would become a C3 community commercial district if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Has anyone signed up to speak? I see the applicant is present. The planning commission did approve this item, recommended for approval, and the purpose to allow future development with the current C3 property to the west and the south of this property. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 12100 Southeast 29th Street. It's currently AA agricultural, and it'd be a new O1 limited office district if approved. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak? It's approved by the planning commission. With that, I would move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward Six. The address is, I'm sorry, Ward Seven, and the address is 2811 Southeast 29th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential and R4 general residential, and the idea is to put it all into a new spud. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak. This is to establish a zoning for the programs and services of our Oklahoma City Animal Warfare Division. The planning commission did approve this, and I recommend it for approval, and I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward Two. The address is 2828 Northwest 30th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? There's no protests and unanimous approval at the planning commission. I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 7202 South I-35 Service Road. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial, and it'd be put into a new spud. Did anyone sign up to speak? All right, I'll look for a motion on item 9A8. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 1301 Northeast 14th Street. It's currently R1 single-family and be put into a new spud if approved. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the VA hospital. I see the applicant is present. Can you quickly go through this force, please? Quickly.
Quickly. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a spud that would take the current Ronna McDonald House and convert it to a VA facility that'll offer a host of services, whether it be some slight medical, some employment-related services, some counseling-related services. It's a much-needed project, and it's one that this spud will allow to move forward. The Ronna McDonald House is going to move to a different facility. This facility was set up well in terms of its location for the VA to be able to operate there.
All right, thank you. This item did not have any protests. With that said, the planning commission recommended for approval. I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A9. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward Eight at 11505 North Penn. It's currently inside of a simplified planned unit development, and it would be a new spud if approved. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an application by Global One Services LLC to permit an office warehouse development. Planning commission recommended approval, and I'm not aware of any protests, so I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A10. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A11 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 10501 South Broadway. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was approved unanimously by the planning commission. There are no protests, and it's to provide for an office along Southwest 104th Street. The applicants are here, if there are any questions, but I would move for approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A11. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward One at 8900 Northwest 10th Street. It's currently inside a planned unit development, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. James?
Yeah, this is just a slight change from the existing PUD that's already on the site. It had a unanimous planning commission approval and no protest. I move for approval.
All right, no one here to speak on this item today? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A13 is a zoning case in Ward Two at 1539 Northwest 29th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would be put into a new spud if approved. Ed?
No protests, unanimous approval at the planning commission. I move for approval if nobody's signed up to speak.
No one has signed up to speak. This is item 9A13. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is an ordinance here. It's also a planning issue in Ward Four. It was recommended for denial. And Todd, you want to take over from here?
You bet. Did we have anyone sign up to speak?
No one has signed up.
Somebody's here, though.
Okay, great. Why don't you go ahead and talk to us now, then?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is William F. Collins III. I'm an attorney in Oklahoma City, been here for a long time. It's good to be back here before you again. I'm representing the Reeves family and several other people who are protesting this rezoning application. Now, the Reeves family's been part of this part of Oklahoma City for a long time. As a matter of fact, Kay Reeves' father, on the end back there, red hair, he developed this property in five-acre tracts. The reason it's five-acre tracts is because this is extremely rural Oklahoma City. Now, the people who live there like their lifestyles. They like living in rural areas. Everybody there, if they so choose, has an opportunity to move into town on smaller tracts, but they like that lifestyle, and they want to be able to maintain it. Now, this developer's coming in. He just bought the property a couple of years ago, and he's trying to split up a 15-acre tract into eight lots. Now, that might not sound like much, but to them, it's a death deal, to my clients. The reason for this is it's rural area. There's no city water, no sewer, no gas, no cable. The only dependable city service, or any kind of service, excuse me, that's not correct, because there is electric out there, but the only dependable city service is trash pickup. One of my clients, Arthur Reeves, the large man next to the redheaded lady, he had a break-in into his house, and he caught the robber. He called the cops. Well, 20 to 30 minutes later, somebody showed up. So dependable police service is not there. This is a long ways out. From my house in rural north Oklahoma City, it took me 35 minutes to get there. It's well over 35 miles from where I live. But this is rural Oklahoma City. The nearest fire station is about four and a half miles away, and if there were a fire, there's no way a fire truck could get there within the response time of five minutes. So anything that would catch fire would be burned to the ground by the time fire department came there. Let's talk about this location. Eight lots on 15 acres. Normally, you see such types of development and zoning, not in the middle of AA, but on the fringes of AA next to more intense development. That's called transition. So you go from a regular subdivision to... So you go from a regular subdivision to larger lot sizes, such as that development that's due south of the sports elementary, there's a development. Those appear to be on one-acre tracts. That's the type of location where one would expect to find this type of development. It's much more intense than what's there all around it. So it's in a wrong location because normally one would expect to see this type of zoning next to something more intense and then stepping down to the AA. Now, you put this in the middle of AA, then what's to stop the properties next door to that from becoming more intense? And like I told you, this is a very rural area of Oklahoma City. As a matter of fact, if you read the staff report, the aquifer is vulnerable, which means there's enough water there now for the current rate of usage on five-acre tracts. You increase the density of housing, you increase the use of water. There are no plans that the city has to extend any utilities. Nothing. So what's there now is what's always going to be there. The roads are insufficient to handle more traffic. Anderson Road and 119th Street, they're passable, but for the limited use that's there now. You increase the use, you're going to increase the issue with roads. Now, speaking of roads, the entryway into this addition is right next door to one of my clients who lives on the west of it. There's no separation at all from the entry to my client's property. Now, the developer has taken it upon itself already to remove virtually all the trees from the center of the property going north-south. So the trees have been gutted. That caused erosion, which in turn has caused siltation onto the people to the west. They've got nothing but sand now on their front yards. And if you go further north, you go, the worse it gets because the property slopes, there's a huge slope from the east to the west, like a 50-foot grade differential in elevation. So everything flows to the west and those people who I represent are now covered with sand coming off of this property. There's no siltation barriers been put up at all. Now, the planning commission voted eight to one against this application and it did so for a reason, because the planning commission recognized what I'm telling you right now. This is extremely rural Oklahoma City and it is, this zoning is totally incompatible with the existing uses. And this part of town is not yet ready to support more intense development than houses on five-acre tracts. It's just plain and simple. My folks don't want it. As a matter of fact, they're one of, my clients are a sum of 20 who don't want it. Now, if you look at, now, the staff has made an error on the calculation of the protest percentage because the people due to the west, due west this site are all against it. That's not enough to throw it up over the 50%, unfortunately. But still, the vast majority of the people who live in this area don't want it. Now, five-acre tracts development do work. There are new houses going up directly to the west of Anderson Road on 119th Street on five-acre tracts, brand-new houses. I saw them yesterday. That works. If this developer wants to put his houses on five-acre tracts on this site, great. My clients would welcome that with open arms, but they would not welcome anything more intense than that because this area just does not support it and they want to keep their lifestyle.
Thank you. Mr. Box?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here today on behalf of the developer, Scott Woodard, who's here, Dwight Butler, the civil engineer, is here as well. You might remember this was on the docket two weeks ago. Councilman Stone requested that we continue it to go meet, to get together, see if we couldn't revise it again to come up with something. As a reminder, I want to show you this map. This is a map I showed you last time. What this represents, the subject side is right here. Everything that has color is something that allows one-acre lots or less. And so of the 20 sections that you see on this map, I think 18 of the 20 sections, some piece of that section is zoned and/or developed for one-acre lot sizes. The PUD that we originally filed sought the development of 12 lots on these 15 acres. We revised that down to eight after we met with Councilman Stone the last time. We have since gone back and reworked the plan to now only have seven lots. In addition, we amended the PUD to require a minimum lot size of two acres. So every lot in here will be the minimum of two acres. We did hear more about the drainage problem. So what we've done is we've taken some common area at the front of the development and we've added a detention pond that wasn't there. In addition to that, we've captured over 10 acres that's outlined right here and we're redirecting the flow to our pond. We understand that the neighbors to our west have a potential problem in not being able to keep their pond full. They're going to have the option now with us taking this water to move it to their pond to keep that pond full. In addition, the PUD has a 40-foot tree preservation area on both the east and the west to provide a buffer. We do have a 60% tree preservation requirement within the PUD. We did remove a lot of trees. There was a lot of red cedars that were out on this property. Those are nuisance trees, as this council knows. So we removed a lot of those. We did have to remove a handful of other trees to do some test wells. Due to the proximity of this site to the lake, this site produced at enormous levels. So there is no concern whatsoever as to the level of water produced by the test wells. So all in all, we believe with the modification to two-acre lots, it's consistent with the development pattern in this area. The reason you don't see a lot of development is there's a lot of vacant land out there. But what this map tells us is when developments have occurred, they've been at the one-acre or one-and-a-half acre. We've bumped our acreage up to now every lot has to be a minimum of two acres. That combined with the tree preservation and the accounting for the drainage and the runoff, we think we've got a development now that is compatible with the existing development pattern in the area. We would ask for your support. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, David. So after this, after I deferred this from the last council meeting, I went out on-site and met with Mr. Box and the applicant and also met with those who are against this All super-nice people and I understand their concerns. Some of those concerns I mentioned to the applicant before leaving, such as the drainage to the west, I think that was really a real concern. And I think, you know, honestly, when you start talking about bumping it up to two-plus acres per lot, so now we're talking about seven houses on 15 acres or three houses on 15 acres. And it really seems like between the seven and the three, there should have been some kind of middle ground there that there wasn't. I wasn't able to find any middle ground. At that time, it was eight and three. Now it's down to seven and three. You know, I believe in property zoning rights and being able to what you want to, that you can do what you want to do with your property as long as it doesn't infringe on the neighboring properties. And when I see these lots at two-plus acres, I just, I don't see that it's going to really infringe or impact the neighbors. The tree buffers are in line, the front elevation on the front of the property, I don't, I don't think you'll hardly be able to see anything past that from the street. So with that, I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9B. Cast your votes. Passes. John, you're voting. Passes 8-1. Councilman Pettis realized he had a con flick. He serves on the KIP board and on item 9A8, that dealt with a KIP issue, he would like to have us reconsider that item so he can step out of the room and have us vote again. So, yeah, can I have a, do we need a motion to reconsider?
We need a motion to reconsider, sir.
All right. Cast your votes and the item passes to reconsider. Now we vote on it again?
We need a new motion.
Okay, now we need a new motion to vote. 9A8. All right, cast your votes and that item passes again. All right, item 9C comes to us from the Traffic Commission. It's about parking in Ward 2. This is on Northwest 27th Street. Ed, you okay with this? All right, anyone here hoping to speak on item 9C? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D would implement a council-approved funding plan. We'll be holding a public hearing today. Is anyone here hoping to speak at the public hearing on item 9D?
I believe we have a presentation.
I have a brief presentation for the city council about this item.
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
The item before you today is the public hearing for various amendments to the project plans for the downtown MAPS Economic Development Project Plan. These items are, these amendments are related to the implementation of the funding plan for the Convention Center Hotel that you approved in July of 2017. First of all, the first amendment is to TIF 2, which is to increase the hotel/commercial budget category by $30 million. The second amendment, the second set of amendments are related to TIF 8. These are to modify TIF 8, the definition in the economic development category to allow for support of the Convention Center Hotel. It also amends the budget category, reduces the amount for economic development by $5 million and increases by $5 million the category called redevelopment framework. And that is the public improvements, the budget for the public improvements that we did in downtown Oklahoma City that were a part of Project 180 in the Myriad Gardens. This just gives us some extra budget capacity if we need it to make additional improvements downtown. These changes were considered by the TIF review committees in December and were both recommended for approval to the city council. This next slide comes from the funding plan that you approved in July and it's just designed to remind you of the various funding sources that will be used to fund the public participation for the Convention Center Hotel. It's $85.4 million. It comes from a variety of sources, most of which are generated by the hotel itself. And if you remember the presentation, we anticipate that some of the, some of the funding sources will be performing at, we call it a low success rate and some will be at a higher success rate. So it just, it'll be a combination of levels of success depending on the various categories and how they do. These changes are highlighted in blue for you. TIF 8, we anticipate using $9.9 million from TIF 8 for the hotel and $28.8 million from TIF 2. So the next steps are these amendments to the Economic Development Project Plan. We will be bringing forward a resolution to initiate the start of Coors Ashore TIF District A in July. We will, we will be approving or bringing forward the approval of the budget allocations from TIF 2 and 8. And then there will be an economic development agreement between the city, the Economic Development Trust and Omni that will also be coming forward in the future. As you remember, there's a couple of other items. We are going, we are planning to allocate the future revenues from the Bass Pro lease that currently go to the redevelopment authority. Those will be allocated to support the Convention Center Hotel. And then again, the lease and loan payments from the Skirvin Hotel will also be allocated to support the bond issue for the Convention Center Hotel. Again, those are two past projects, economic development projects that we've done many years ago now that have proven to be very successful and have generated quite a bit of revenues from the city that are in addition to the tax revenues that they generate. So, and then finally, there will be an Economic Development Trust bond issue sometime this summer. That, I'll be glad to answer any questions, answer any questions that even the public might have.
All right. Item being introduced today, we would be setting a final hearing for May 13th, March 13th if we proceed. Questions for Kathy? All right, Kathy, why don't you have a seat and then we'll open it up for a public hearing if anyone hears her to speak. Is there anyone here hoping to speak at the public hearing today on item 9D1? All right, how about a motion then to introduce the item and set a final hearing date for March 13th? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes. Mark's here. Is he? 8-1. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is an interesting item. Back in November of 2001, the citizens passed what is now known as MAPS for Kids and since then it has been building schools and helping us to define the continued role between the city and the intercity school district. Wound up providing over $100 million into the suburban districts, about $150 million districts, new buses, new technology. And today, with council action, would be the end of the MAPS for Kids trust with the remaining dollars handed from the trust over to the city as we continue to build some final projects for the city. But the trust has been in place and so one, we've had, what do we say, four, four members have been on that trust since the beginning and have served continuously and there's others that have been on there like only 10 years. And so it's been quite a commitment by several of our citizens who have, you know, taken this as an oversight position and we owe them a great deal of credit and thanks for being willing to serve in that role.
We should at least mention the four members that were there from the beginning. It's Carl Edwards, it's JW Mashburn, it's Valerie Thompson, and Pat Rooney, the four that have served all along and Kerry Decker, I think, has been there for 15 years or something along the lines. You know, the school district has still challenges out there and there's pockets of excellence and pockets of areas where they still have some challenges, but if you think of where they might be, if they had the challenges that they have with crumbling buildings, crumbling buses and, it would be, it would be much worse off than it is today.
You know, they haven't finished the administration project and those would be part of the dollars that hand over to the city or how does that work exactly?
We have projects underway right now is Caesar Chavez is essentially done. FD Moon is in preliminary plans, starting final plans. We have some work at Capitol Hill for the roadway that circles Capitol High School. And then we also have a traffic study for Capitol Hill. And then there's going to be about $800,000 left over. The administration building, we did some, some early study on the original building on Klein, but it was decided not to go there. And then there's been various, various plans to move administration, but right now we But right now, we're not doing any kind of renovation on an admin building. They've split. They put some of their people at the northeast and at the service center.
But the school district is still with other funds looking at developing this item on class.
All right, item nine H is a motion that would push the remaining funds from the trust into the city and then the city would continue to work on the projects that David just mentioned. All right, cast your votes on nine H. It passed unanimously. And then item nine I would terminate the Metropolitan Area Public Schools Trust. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Probably should mention former Mayor Humphries and Cliff for all the work they did and the business leaders that put the MAPS for Trust, MAPS for Kids Trust in place so many years ago. I've often said if there's ever a Hall of Fame for consensus building, those involved with that MAPS for Kids design deserve some special accolades. To get twenty-four school districts to commit to one funding model was an amazing accomplishment in the late 1990s. And we stand today with much better capital projects in our schools as a result. So let's thank Cliff Hudson and Kirk as we say goodbye to MAPS for Kids. All right, item nine J is a resolution. This would modernize our regulations on the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority. Affects wards three, six, and seven. So a motion from one of those would be appropriate. You want to have Doug speak?
If you want Doug to speak.
Doug, come on up. You're halfway there anyway.
Good morning. Doug Copper, Director of Parks and Recreation. As you all know, the river is seven miles long. Previously, it was broken up into sixteen separate areas that could be used for events. Our documents for how we created rules and regulations before this revision was fifty-nine pages long. It's now down to fourteen pages. We took out all of the duplications and triplications of languages in our rules that were already identified in the city ordinances or elsewhere in city documents. So we've reduced that so it's easier to read, easier to understand. Obviously, when we started down this path, we didn't know how well it would be used or what kind of activities people would want to use our river trails or our riverbanks for. So we're trying to modernize how we perceive the uses of the river trail as it has evolved as everything that we do city government-wise. So we think that we'll have a better product. The people that want to have special events or activities on the riverbank will have an easier time to understand what's required of them. And we think that the way we're approaching this will help facilitate keeping one portion of the trail or another open for public use so that special events don't occupy all the resources down there. So the general public will still be able to either bicycle or run somewhere on the trail systems along the riverbank. So be happy to answer any questions, but this modernizes it. It makes it easier for our public to understand how they can use the river. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, how about a motion then on the modernizing these regulations on the river? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine K would amend our revolving fund policies.
And Chris Varga is here this morning to explain that to us.
Good morning. This item relates to the commercial district revolving loan fund that was established by council about three years ago, initially funded with community development block grant funds in the amount of $750,000. At the time, we council passed some accompanying policies that governed how those loans would be implemented. And that existing policy today requires that the maximum loan amount be one-third of the amount that's available in the loan account. In January, council approved a reallocation because the loan fund was not performing well. We weren't not getting a lot of activity and there's concern about timeliness of expending the block grant funds. Council reallocated $450,000 from that fund to other block grant activities. So at this point, we have $265,000 left in this loan account. And we do are speaking with some candidates that may have viable projects. And we find that the one-third cap at this point is limiting and would not provide the amount of lending dollars that they need. So we are asking that that loan cap be removed in today's proposal.
All right, how about a motion then on nine K to approve this amendment on our revolving fund policies? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine eleven would approve our collective bargaining agreement with ASME. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Want to thank all involved in that. Item nine M. Oh, this has to do with the management.
No, that's the next one. This is non-representative employees. So these are folks that are generally the same classifications as ASME, but their job classifications are generally in personnel or finance that are sensitive. And so they are not in the ASME bargaining unit. So it's to give them similar benefits.
I see, to reflect the ASME agreement.
Yes.
All right. Motion on nine M. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then nine N is management. And again, this reflects the ASME agreement being in place. Is there a motion? Okay, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, item nine O would provide some legal help to meet some new federal regulations that have been put in place. All right. Item nine O. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine P. Understand we do not need executive session? All right, we have a motion to move item nine P to executive session. Cast your votes. It passed... I'm sorry. We do not need it. This would be approving the resolution and not going into executive session. And it passed unanimously. All right, item nine Q. Understand we do not need executive session?
Right.
And so a motion to approve the resolution would be in order. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine R. Understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine S. Understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to move item nine S into executive session? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine T is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine T? All right, how about a motion to deny the claims? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item ten A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of those items? Okay. Yeah, I've reflected two items there, but item ten A one B has already been stricken. So we're just voting on item ten A one A. And cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item eleven is items from council. And Ed, you want to start with the item that you've introduced. We're having a public hearing today. All right, we have two people that have signed up. Lennox Ryerson Gonzalez. Yeah, come on forward. And if you want Andrew with you, he signed up on the same sheet of paper. So if you all want to come up together, you can. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Lennox Ryerson Gonzalez and it's 2905 Northwest Seventieth Street.
Okay.
So we are here to open ourselves to questions. I know that you guys met the last session and passed five to two... Three, sorry. And we wanted all our employees to show up today, you know, so you can hear from their side, not just ours. So I'm going to kind of like pass my time on to Jess. She's one of our employees and she has a couple of statements that she'd like to read from herself and also another one of the employees that works for us that wasn't able to attend today.
Okay, great.
If I could.
Jessica? Good morning. We'll need your address for the record too, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Jessica Barrow. My address is 412 North Finley Avenue, Norman, Oklahoma 73071.
Okay.
And I'd like to say good morning and thanks so much for letting me speak in front of you guys today. So I will try to make this as quick as possible as well because I am ready for two people, myself and another employee. I will start off with my statement. Before I started employment at Adam &amp; Eve, I was actually a customer. And my experience was beyond phenomenal. I can remember feeling or walking in feeling mentally and physically broken down. I was actually opened with... welcomed with open arms and I explained the issue that I was having, even though I was absolutely terrified to be there. But I soon realized that they were only there to help and to educate me and not to judge. I walked out of that store that day feeling more confident in myself and I didn't feel as worn down as before. I have also taken one of the couples classes we have offered in the past before I was an employee, which was a relationship-building course. My partner and I learned how to communicate better, understand each other's feelings, as well as ultimately brought us together. I can personally say that this store strives to provide the best sexual education and well-being of our customers. I can say this with confidence because as an employee, I am required to take sexual health courses to become a certified sexual health expert and educator. Now, with that being said, I am asked in store and not only in store but out of store, personal questions, but I receive questions from parents on how to bring up the talk about sexual health with their children. Now, in regards to the code in question, we never allow children in the store. I have actually turned away parents who bring their infants in because no one under the age of eighteen can enter in the store. Now, most responsible parents will quickly turn their children away from the store due to it is an adult store and it is adult nature. Now, on that note, like I said before, we are an adult store, not a family-oriented store, unlike Walmart, Target, and CBS, which are starting to carry these adult items in view of children, which is not okay. We are here to actually provide sexual education to be a source of knowledge as well... I'm sorry. Which most stores in the area are not. They don't provide the education that we do to our customers. It would be a shame to shut us down due for that reason alone. Thank you. That would be my statement. And this is going to be Brittany's. To put my opinions and account into a quick summary would never do this business justice. However, I will try to be brief. In regards to the code in question, I find it hard to believe that the state even operates in such a manner. Having grown up in cities with adult stores, it is safe to say that houses were almost always nearby, never giving much regard or thought toward the business a few blocks away. But simply calling Adam &amp; Eve an adult business is cutting it... is cutting not only my community efforts, but my work, family's work short. One of the few reasons I was hired was the fact that I wanted to make a difference in our community's understanding of sexual health and education after having it banned in both my middle school and high school growing up. Now that I'm a certified sexual health expert and educator, I can rightfully say my coworkers and I stand up to the standard I was hired over. And yes, I say standard because it is such within our walls, a standard, a requirement, and a necessity. Being educated and willing to teach is part of our reason for being. But our community stance aside, I can personally say that this store, rather this little family, has changed me for the better. When I was first hired, I was an anxious wreck that was fairly squeamish when it came to the adult industry. Within my almost two years, I've gained knowledge, confidence, and understanding of my own identity far better than I could ever done on my own. To be frank, the internet is a vast and confusing place. With the books, references, and resources, and mentors available to me within the walls of our Norman establishment, I feel safe and happy with being myself, just like many of our customers state on a daily basis. I could go on about how... about the benefits of us, my store, my coworkers, my team, and I know they'll cringe when I say this, bosses. But we can all readily agree that's not why we're here. An old rule was brought to the attention with a rise cry of what about our children? Or rather blatant, kids and adults alike shouldn't have to be exposed to any adult content. My response to that is we have operated for over three years with windows open and no complaints from our customers in Norman. Granted, we cater to a rather diverse crowd. However, I can say with confidence that kids are never a factor in our business. At our Norman location, we are placed dead center on historic Main Street. It is safe to say that we see a lot of foot traffic on the sidewalks from our cleared windows. With foot traffic comes children. Now, from what I can see on a near Bailey basis, most responsible parents will usher their giggling tots away from the windows, the youngsters point and laugh at our mannequins. You see, we keep any adult material turned away from our site from the street. Rather strategically, store mapping can take care of any kiddo seeing something their parents don't want them to see. Another common reaction is for parents to explain that it's a grown-up shop and kids don't need to worry about it, which seems more fitting than any other description. Kids very rarely dive into the adult material or sexuality itself until they are experiencing it through their own puberty or sexual awareness, in which case a forementioned internet and sex education classes are a gift to the public. But in several instances, we are also... we also taught parents how to discuss the talk or any other number of milestones discussions with their children. I could count on several hands how many resources I've gathered and pamphlets I've printed to parents that just don't know how to talk to their older kids about sexual health and safety. We are a center for knowledge and resource first and foremost. As Lenny and Andy stated before, they hired me and I've stood up... stood and repeatedly repeated daily that that's what we're here for. We are here to help. Getting rid of us, well, with the state of our education system, especially regarding sexual education, I think it's safe to say it would be horrific for not only generations before us, like the baby boomers, Gen Xers, et cetera. It would be a curse for the parents trying to raise Gen Z and those afterwards. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I am sure to reflect... I am sure many others reflect on what I have written, Brittany Ayers.
All right. All right, and no action today on this item. The final hearing has been set for March thirteenth. This is just a public hearing and an opportunity for people to weigh in. Anything else?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's not understand again before the council members. And we appreciate the opportunity that we've been given to discuss this in a public hearing setting. And also, thank you to you and Brittany and the rest of the team that couldn't be here today. That really touches me. We didn't coach Jess or Brittany in any manner. And to hear from their point of view is really validating to me because when certain elements of the city are against what we do, it's hurtful for us. We do very much believe that we're very moral people and that we are in keeping with the tradition of Oklahoma being a families-first environment. And we feel that even though when this ordinance was drafted more than two decades ago, it doesn't even speak to, if you can operate a store, maybe way out there in the country somewhere, wherever these... you can get out of those circles, there's nothing that talks about what age you have to be to be in these stores. To me, it's common sense. I'm sure to everybody assembled here, it's common sense, but there could be a loophole. And after we were before the council in the last session, I decided to walk through Penn Square Mall. And I know I had mentioned Spencer's because I remember years ago seeing some products in Spencer's, maybe one or two or three. And I walked into that store at Penn Square just a week or two ago. And I was actually floored because for what we believe the intent of the ordinance might have been originally... And by the way, we were not able to find any minutes or any discussion of why this ordinance wasn't acted or any public discussion as to why it might have brought that forward. Walking through Spencer's, I was just floored that probably easily half their store has adult products. And there is no delineation, like if you're under eighteen, you can't go beyond this point. In fact, when I was in there, there were a number of youth that were in there and giggling or what have you. But I would invite each of you to please take a look at one of our locations. Do it incognito. Send somebody down. Try to get a feel before making a final decision about how we are as a member of the community... Try to get a feel before making a final decision about how we are as a member of the community and what we're doing, not just retailer, but as a good neighbor to our community versus some that are not. And I would like to go even as far to say that assuming that on the next meeting where there's a final vote, that this ordinance be repealed, I still think that there's a concern about the age limit. Because although we'll keep children out of our stores, maybe there does need to be a revisiting. I think it's good to have a public discussion of this nature and talk about how retailers like ourselves and others that are not present here today can work with the neighborhood, can work with the various cities and jurisdictions and the state on how to do things properly in this day and age in 2018 and beyond. I think that there's a lot more room for intelligent discussion and discourse on that. So again, I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to hear us on this issue. And I think that even no matter what happens during the final vote, I don't think that this issue would simply be over. I think that this is going to preempt a serious, ongoing discussion that would be healthy for our community, healthy for educators, and for our adults. So thanks for coming down.
All right. Final action on March 13th. James?
I mean, I think he makes a great point on the age limit being a more common sense regulation on stores like this that sell these sorts of items. So I would say that that's a good route to go rather than the distance. But over the last two weeks, I had a thought about the distance being 1,000 feet. And like if we don't want to just kick out the regulations altogether, which is what this would do, I mean, I think that just reducing that amount would make it to where we're still using the same regulations, but it's, I mean, 1,000 feet's three football fields. I mean, I would say that something more reasonable would be 500 or 300 feet to where it's not outlawing at all, I mean, where there's only certain tiny little pockets within the city that you can legally be. So those are my two thoughts.
Okay. Anything else you want to talk about on items from council, James? Okay. Ed? Larry? Todd?
I keep hearing about a potentially a new development of a naval thing on the river. And I was just curious if anyone else is hearing about that with the USS Secretary of the City and where that is or when we might hear something about that.
There is a proposal to put the top part of the USS Oklahoma City when it's decommissioned down at the river with a replica of the size of the submarine. It's been before the riverfront crust a couple of times with no decision made at this point.
It is on the agenda again today, Todd, but I think Chairman Mars is going to move to have it deferred one more time to have a little bit further conversation. What we're talking about receiving, and this is not a project I initiated, so please, I don't have every detail, but I am pretty involved in sort of discussing about location. And what we will receive when the ship is decommissioned, which may be three or four years from now, is only the sail, which is the part that goes up and down. And so it is not the submarine. And so there's been some discussion about using the sail and then creating a 320-foot-long, which is the size of a football field, long sort of fiberglass, fiberboard model of the sub and placing it immediately west of the Chesapeake Boathouse, down in the Boathouse District.
Wow.
And accompanying it with some other naval artifacts from some other ships or boats that relate to Oklahoma City. Anchor bells and various things. And the idea would be that it would be just a static.
Display.
Display. And there's been some concern expressed, including from me, that it aesthetically might not be, you know, completely in keeping with millions of dollars that we've invested in the Boathouse District. And there might be a location that might be a little bit more appropriate for it. It needs parking presumably, and parking's an issue already down at the Boathouse District. And there's some other sites that have been reviewed. So there's just an ongoing conversation about who, what, and where it might happen. But there's a very dedicated group of folks, including Admiral Silonick. And I think Mayor Moore's been involved, and Gary Mars is certainly going to be supportive. I think David's been engaged from the beginning, talking about it. So we just wanted to assure that the site was really the best site for it. It's an exciting project for Oklahoma City and a wonderful way to honor the Navy.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. David? Meg? Anything else? John?
I just want to say, Mr. Manager, thank you to you and your staff for putting things on our social media platforms about Black History Month, and especially as it relates to the accomplishments that we have made as a city throughout time. So again, thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you to Kristy and her team. Thank you.
All right. Mark?
Mayor, I just wanted to echo your comments. You think about Pat Rooney, J.W. Mashburn, Carl Edwards, and Valerie Thompson as volunteers for 16 years. I mean, that's public service at its finest. And I would hope that we would invite them here, we would recognize them, and maybe hear some great war stories sometime in the future.
Yeah, it's a good idea. All right. City manager reports.
We just have the sales and use tax report for February. It was a strong month for us. And we'll be looking at this data more in depth as we get ready for the budget.
All right. We have executive session. We'll be back.